Long time no see.
Welcome. Where's dinner?
I'm getting sick of this.
Priya, is Amalia gonna be helping with the public comment, or are you doing that this evening?
I'm going to be doing that.
Okay, very good.
I feel guilty. I should have gotten you guys like some care package for dinner.
We're pretty dispersed here. It might have been a little difficult.
Yeah, let go of the guilt. No need. We can take it. I am eating extra chocolate, though.
I could use a margarita right now.
Don't do that. That doesn't, that's in our protocol. Can't do that.
Any hints to anyone?
So I have sent you all the latest, um, public comments. So we are all up to date and it's all attached to the agenda, publicly available.
I don't know.
And as a reminder, since it is a special meeting, we will not be taking public comment during the public comment portion.
Thank you for that. Cindy, will you let me know when the time is right?
I'll let you know.
Thank you.
You are good to go.
Okay, very good. Um, I'd like to welcome everybody. This is the City of St. Helena Special City Council Meeting, Wednesday, July 8th, 2020. Uh, I have a special paragraph to read regarding remote meetings. I'll read that now. Uh, in accordance with executive orders N dash 25 dash 20, N dash 29 dash 20, and guidance from the California Department of Public Health on gatherings, remote public participation is allowed. We will address the order in the following ways. Members of the public may not physically attend meetings. The city council meeting will be live streamed on Comcast Channel 28 and on the city's website barring technical difficulties. Those members of the public wishing to participate must do so remotely via Zoom electronic meetings in the following ways. By either logging onto the Zoom link located on the meeting agenda, please download the app to your computer or mobile device and enter the meeting ID, or by calling a listed number and then enter the meeting ID. Public comment for city council meetings will be accepted via email to publiccomment@cityofstholena.org. Please see the end of the agenda for detailed public participation instructions. Priya, is there any additional information on public, uh, participation?
And again, I'll just remind everyone that if you are joining via Zoom, you can use, um, Cindy, did you have something you wanted to say? Okay, I'll let you go first.
I just wanted to mention that the internet is not stable in St. Helena right now. Um, Mayor Ellsworth, you kind of were cutting in and out. Could we read aloud the phone number to call in just in case if anyone else has any issues?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to read the phone number, um, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
So the, the phone number is 669-900-6833. And then you'll be prompted to put in a meeting ID, and that is 811-4970-1761. I'll repeat that one more time.
Yes, please.
Sure. Yes, so it's 669-900-6833. And then you'll be prompted to put in a meeting ID, and that meeting ID is 811-4970-1761.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, I'll just remind everyone who's joining via Zoom. If you would like to speak during the public comment portion, you can either use the raise hand feature, which is located at the bottom of the screen if you're using a computer, or at the top of the screen if you're using, um, an iPhone or an iPad. That's how you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move into the pledge of allegiance. This is where I'll ask folks to mute their microphones. You may remain seated, uh, and then follow with me, um, place your hand over your heart and, uh, follow, please. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we'll move to our roll call, please.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Here.
Councilmember Koberstein.
Here.
Councilmember Knutson.
Present.
Chuteau.
Here.
Very good. Now, um, uh, this is a special meeting, so public comment will be, uh, opened during the, the item that we'll be discussing. I just want a moment here before we get into the meeting to remind folks that we are still in an emergency, uh, state, um, and due to COVID-19, uh, the intensity of the situation continues, uh, around the state, the country, and regionally and locally. So we need to continue to keep that in our minds and focused on what we can do in terms of our, uh, protocol here, in terms of, uh, mask, uh, mask wearing, social distancing, and avoiding, uh, large gatherings. Um, we need to be cognizant that, that everybody, uh, particularly in government, uh, is, is busy, uh, working on this together. Um, we are trying to get back to, uh, stages of opening, uh, but, um, we're also watching numbers that are telling us, uh, we have to continue to be vigilant, uh, and follow the state and the county's directives. Uh, so with that said, um, we will move now to the, uh, new business. Uh, this is the item 5.1. This is initiative measure prohibiting hotel motel development on public land located at the corner of Library Lane and Adam Street. And this is gonna, um, be presented by, uh, our city attorney, Kara Ueda.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and members of the city council, this item follows from the city council meeting of June 9th, when the city council heard a report on an initiative measure concerning the Adam Street property. During the city council's June 9th meeting, the council directed the preparation of an analysis of the measure and to return with that report analysis within 30 days as required by state law. That report has now been prepared and is included as an attachment to your staff report. It analyzes the specific impacts that are set forth in Elections Code Section 9212 and provides a legal analysis of the measure. I will highlight tonight for you the three main areas the report touched on in the legal analysis. I'm also happy to try to answer any questions the council may have regarding other parts of the report that may need to rely on planning staff to assist with some of the issues concerning land use or the general plan. The primary purpose of the report was to provide the city council with additional information about the initiative. Similar to a staff report that would have been prepared for a city staff initiated ordinance. The report does not provide an opinion as to whether the initiative is a good policy decision or not, but it does provide a policy, it does provide analysis of legal concerns. I want to note at the outset, I have given this measure a significant amount of thought and attention ever since it was first presented to the city clerk or office to prepare the title in summary. In writing the section 9212 report and rereading the applicable law and reviewing the issues that the initiative presented, the recommended action that's presented to you in the staff report isn't one that I took lightly. The power of the voters to propose legislation and place it on the ballot in the state is one that is highly valued and regarded, not only by the courts, but also by the people. Having said that, the right to the initiative is not unlimited. The section 9212 report provides information about what I see as potential legal infirmities with the initiative. First and foremost, the initiative, in my opinion, does not propose a legislative act. Legislative acts are typically set forth in an ordinance and can do things such as government behavior, such as the no smoking ordinance, or provide for various land use standards such as a zoning code. An initiative may also propose to amend the general plan. This initiative, however, is not framed as an ordinance to be adopted by the voters. While it has language that states the people of the City of St. Helena do ordain as follows, the remainder of the initiative isn't styled as an ordinance, and it does not report to enact law. Additionally, the initiative does not include any mechanisms for how it would be implemented. It, uh, it declares a fairly broad policy statement or purpose, um, but doesn't state how that purpose would be accomplished. Doesn't, it wouldn't amend the general plan or the zoning code. If the city were to do either of those items on its own, meaning amending the general plan or amending the zoning code, it's unclear if the property would have its own separate general plan designation and zoning designation, all of its own for this 5.6 acre property, or how that would be accomplished or effectuated. Finally, we believe the initiative could be struck down as being void for vagueness, both for its failure to include a mechanism for implementation and for not proposing a legislative act, but also because the term hotel slash motel is not defined. It's unclear which definition of a hotel slash motel should be used. For example, the zoning code treats a bed and breakfast as different from a hotel or motel, and also treats a lodging house, which also provides room and board for compensation, as separate from a hotel, motel, or a bed and breakfast. In short, the initiative does not define the term, and interpretation would presumably be left to the city and city council, and that interpretation may not be consistent with the proponents or the voters intend. Finally, the measure does read more like an advisory measure than an initiative measure proposing a legislative act. Um, advisory measures are not binding on the city or the city council, but generally ask the voters what their opinions are on a particular topic. One alternative that is available to the city council is to place an advisory measure on the ballot instead that asks a question. But again, they are not binding, um, but do provide a means to get a, um, gauge an opinion as to what people are thinking about a question. Thus, it is my legal opinion that the initiative measure does not propose a legislative act, that it is an impermissible use of the initiative power, and that it would potentially be determined to be impermissibly vague. I also want to note that the report analyzed the potential impacts of the initiative measure. It's important to understand what this initiative, to the extent that we understand it, would and would not do. The measure, if it is placed on the ballot and if it's approved by the voters, would not protect the property as open space. Any other use that is currently permitted on the property, which is currently designated commercial business in the general plan, would still be able to proceed pursuant to all other applicable land use regulations in the zoning code. The commercial business does, land use designation currently includes retail and commercial uses, which include office, restaurants, especially retail and lodging, with a particular emphasis on pedestrian-oriented retail and service uses. Thus, the impacts of what could happen without a hotel on the property were analyzed, um, not what may happen on the property or the impacts of a specific project on the property. That was the summary of the analysis of the initiative measure. For the three reasons that I specified previously concerning our concerns about legal issues identified with the initiative, it is my recommendation not to place the measure on the ballot. Ultimately, however, the decision as to whether to place the measure on the ballot is a policy decision for the city council to make. The city council also has two other options and a potential hybrid option. The city council may choose to adopt the measure as it is written within 10 days of today's meeting. If the city council chooses to do so, it must adopt the measure as written and cannot make any changes. The city council could choose to place the measure on the November 2020 ballot, and we would prepare a resolution to call that election and have that item before the council during next Tuesday's city council meeting on July 14th. Again, that initiative would go to the voters exactly as written without any changes by the city council. Finally, the city council could choose to not place the measure on the ballot. The city council may wish, however, to instead place an advisory measure on the November 2020 ballot. If the council desires to do so, we would need specific direction as to what that measure would say. And we could also bring that item back to you for adoption at your next city council meeting, next Tuesday, July 14th. That was in summary, a summary of the section 9212 report that was provided to you in your staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Mayor, I believe you're on mute.
Priya, what is the direction to unmute yourself on your phone?
Um, it is star, star six to unmute.
Can you hear me now through this? I'm getting a considerable echo. Let me try it again on screen.
Mute your phone or mute the device. You're videoing on Jeff. Can't hear you.
How, how about that?
There you go.
Okay. So, I'm gonna bring it first to the council and, um, see if we have any initial council comments or questions before we open it up to the public. Uh, any thoughts from the council at this point?
These are just questions, not comments. Is that what you're looking for now?
Oh. I'm having a, I'm having some trouble. Um, I'm gonna have to, um, can, can we pause for about five minutes or three minutes so I can get my things adjusted here?
If I can make a reminder to everyone, if you are not speaking, please mute yourself.
Come up with, uh, see, we took my volume down. Here we go, here we go, here we go. Let's see. If I can. Yeah.
If I can.
Yeah. Okay. Can you hear me on the screen? I can't, you can hear me, but I can't hear you. That's the problem.
You.
Okay.
This is Priya.
I'll come back in just a minute.
You can't hear us?
Maybe the vice mayor could take over for the interim or something.
I mean, I heard what you said. I'm waiting a few seconds to see what happens. So, so the mayor asked for any initial comments and questions. Um, let me start. Okay, can we try this? There we go. I'm still not getting any sound, so I'm. What sound would you be getting?
Ms. Koberstein, do you use Comcast? Cause I think it's Comcast issue, honestly.
Yeah, I'm on Comcast right now.
That's what we've observed today. This Comcast has been spotty.
Oh, I'm not having any problems at the moment, but.
So I had a message on my computer. I've just switched, so I'm going over the cell, I think, that my internet connection was unreliable. And you know, Zoom is a bandwidth hog. It really is, so.
Well.
What is the mayor doing?
I'll, I'll try to talk him through again to get him back on.
I, I feel like I'm, um, it's not appropriate for me to start just yet, given the sensitivity of this issue, so I'll, we'll wait a few seconds.
Okay, we're gonna give it a shot one more time.
Pull out your calendar, Mark.
We're at the mercy, we're at the mercy of our technology providers.
And I will.
I think you can hear.
Mayor Ellsworth, you appear to be unmuted. Can you hear us? Councilmember Knutson, can you mute yourself, please?
Can you hear me now? Cindy, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. I apologize. No, I'm getting an echo as well. Paul?
Paul?
Do you wanna start running the meeting? While I try to resolve this?
Uh, yes, I want to let you know that I would be very hesitant, uh, to finish out the meeting without you present. I don't, I think this is too important a meeting to not have you present. I would be happy to, to start.
It might just take me five minutes or so, but I think you can get started, and I can hear it. Okay. All right. Look, uh, let, let's get started. I was gonna make some comments, but now I'm serving in a different role, so I will, um, defer. Is there anybody that has any initial questions for our attorney or staff regarding the staff report? Um, or any comments in general? And we're gonna open it up to, to comment at some point, but, uh, any, anyone wanna start? Councilmember Chuteau, please.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify, cause I heard the city attorney address this new idea that came up that it is possible for the council to reframe this initiative as an advisory measure. So that would be different, um, but we could use a similar language, but have it not be the current initiative, but ask more of the question, um, to guide us as a council and put that on the ballot. So what would that process look like? How do we move forward? So what would that process look like? How do we move forward with that option?
Sure, so just to be clear, it's not a matter so much of reframing the current initiative, because the city doesn't have any ability to amend that language. Instead, if the council is interested in still knowing the answer to the question that has been proposed in the initiative measure, which is primarily should the Adams Street property be protected from being developed with a hotel or a motel. That question could basically be put on the ballot for the voters to vote on at the November election. Normally, initiative measures are subject to CEQA, and we would have to do a separate CEQA review. But because an advisory measure doesn't actually propose to enact an ordinance, an advisory measure could be written. It would basically be a question, typically just a very short question. And then that question would come back to the council in the form of a resolution calling the election, and then forwarded on to the county registrar of voters for placement on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot. However, because the county has indicated that the very last day for the city to adopt a resolution calling the election is next Tuesday, that would need to be done very quickly.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions, initial questions from any of our council members? Councilmember Coburnstein, yes, you have the floor.
Yeah, just following up on this issue. You know, I, I think we're all interested in getting public opinion and hearing back from our residents. What kind of informational narratives or whatever come out to the public with an advisory type of measure? Is it, at what points are the pros and cons of each side put together? And who would do that? The, the council members or members of the public? How do you see something like that happening?
Yeah, so an advisory measure is different, because it doesn't actually propose any specific language to be adopted by the city council. So it doesn't have the same sort of import as a regular initiative measure would that is given, you know, more sort of usual time and attention. And similarly, it doesn't have a proponent, per se, because nothing has been circulated within the community. However, the measure would still be subject to all of the same typical rules, and the council would still have the same processes and procedures in place for, and rules in place for limitations that the council could take, for example, on ballot measure advocacy. So it's not all that much different from initiative measure proposing an ordinance, but there wouldn't be as much, if the council had placed an ordinance on the ballot, for example, there's not really a whole lot of meat around it to really, I guess, sort of attach to it.
I guess just for the general public, would you, normally when we see valid initiatives, you'll see a statement in favor of it, a statement against, a rebuttal. Is that the same thing people will see in this case, or is it different because it's advisory?
My understanding, I'd have to go back and double check, but I, I believe typically they do have, there is the opportunity to have both, both arguments going back and forth. However, it is, as I said, different, because typically the proponents and the opponents are usually a little bit more, well, they're usually our proponents than people who are opposed to it.
Yeah, my interest isn't so much arguing one side or the other, but just getting information out somewhat in the same way to your report, so I'm sure the city could publish something. I, I know when we were dealing with rent stabilization, the city had to be very careful about what we could do and how we could use city time. So I think this is an idea worth pursuing, and maybe we have this conversation later, exactly. How do people understand what they're being asked and what the ramifications are and whatever?
Mr. Mayor, are you ready to join us?
You're muted, Jeff.
It's fair sexed.
Sorry. Any other council members have any initial comments or questions for our city attorney or our staff? See, now, let me take a moment to, to have a comment here. So I don't know how many letters have been written, but a number of letters have been written to us. Some of them, the last three came in about, I don't know, half hour ago, which I've read. Thank you for the community, to the community for engaging on this important issue. I want to commend our, our public, our citizens for maintaining such civility and, and expressing themselves in such an articulate way. There's so many, I want to take the time to just list all these letters, their names. Alan Galbraith, Lorraine Ruston, Sherry Harmon, Kimberly and David George David, Linda Rose, Richard Cyperheld, Maren Hanson, Christine Hale, Lip Ward, Thomas Allen, Elaine Honig, Oliver Karen Caldwell, Tom Belt, Pat Dell, Grace Kissner, Andrew Novoni, Nancy Durbin, Sarah from Nancy Durbin, Sharon Delamontica, Susan Kenward, Douglas Barr, Mark Smithers, Jack Stewart, Ann Carr. And then I got another three today that just came in. Former Mayor Ann Navarro, Holly Rogers, Stephen Kenny. I have read every single letter, and thank you so much for making your comments. I do want to get to the heart of an issue, though, that, that has been on my mind and on my heart for a while. And that it is this, that somehow there's a, a thought in our community that some of our council members may be more invested in this project than appropriate, and that words like corruption have been bandied about, words like breach of duty or breach of fiduciary duty, words like in the pocket of developers. To me, that is very disturbing language for a community like St. Helena. I have no basis at all to see any of that language applicable to any of our leaders. I know each and every one of our leaders on the city council, and what I do know is this. Each one of us is highly passionate about this subject. We love our community, and we are working toward that end. So the notion there's some kind of deal going on and that kind of thing is just not appropriate. And I would caution folks to not entertain that until there's some kind of evidence, which I have not seen. I think it does our city a disservice. It does our council members a disservice. Each and every one of us sitting on this council needs to call that out, because that is what leaders do. That is effective leadership. And if somebody has something that they can show otherwise, I'm happy to look at it. But that is not appropriate for our community. It really brings us down when we should be loving one another, especially during this time. We should be kind to one another, and we should realize essentially that each one of us is simply a volunteer, doing our best for our community. So I would want to put that out on the table and invite all of our council members, hopefully, to acknowledge that and affirm that commitment to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, are you ready to go in there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, there we go. Thank you. I appreciate everybody hanging in there. Have we, have we moved into public comment at all yet, or are we still taking the council, council comment? Anna, are you, do you have a comment at this point?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, Vice Mayor Doring, and I affirm what you just said and appreciate your comments.
Additional council comment? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Doring. I appreciate your comments. And so this is a challenging issue. This is, what we've seen is the community speaking and putting forth their, their voice, saying that they want to have a voice in this. I think if there's no additional council comment now, I will open it to public comment. And what I'll do is, Priya, if you can handle the queue and sort of let us know when somebody's ready to speak. We, we give four minutes to each speaker, and ask that everybody, respect that four minutes. And we want to hear what everybody has to say as we, as we have this discussion, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. We do have members of the public who would like to speak. So I'm going to go ahead and look at the queue and unmute the first person and start my clock. So hold on one second. Okay, and this person should be unmuted.
Great to go first. Mike Packard here. Thank you, Paul, because we are a divided country now, and those words were heartfelt and really meaningful at this time, for sure. I want to talk about two main issues. One is, because I've been through the process myself three times, and I've been shot down, I just want you to recognize the tremendous amount of work that went into trying to get this initiative on the ballot in St. Helena. I've copied a few court findings that relate to the importance of it. I'll just read those. You'll know that I'm reading, and that they are quotes. "Recognizing the fundamental nature of the people's constitutionally enshrined initiative power and well-established judicial power to apply a liberal construction to this power. Whenever it is challenged, the courts have repeatedly rejected attempts by hostile legislatures to transform the clear-cut provisions of the election code." Secondly, it is the city's duty to certify proposed measure unless noncompliance is manifest on the face of the submitted petition. The point, of course, that I'm making is that people went to a lot of trouble. This is clearly a very important principled measure, and I believe that it needs to go forward in some form for certain. The second issue I want to bring up relates to the Financial Task Force and its, its adoption of the selling the property, it seems. I have concerns about the possible conflicts of interest with the Infrastructure Financing Task Force, since they are being referenced in a foundational way in this staff report. I watched the Financial Task Force meeting. I was struck by the lack of options being offered in this, in this situation. The only option introduced, more hotels, which seems like a narrow view. I've said this before to you all. And I want to sound like a broken record, but the city is feeling like it needs more TOT, and I think you need more diversity. To increase the city's dependency on TOT to fund the city's operations, to me, seems short-sighted. TOT from the revenue standpoint is great when it is here, but there is a delicate balance to be considered when looking at visitation. So not only did the Financial Task Force not consider any other possible revenue sources, nor any environmental climate or community impacts, but I'm wondering if any have ties to the cell industry. I don't know that, and I just hope that a lot of thought will go into this, and let's hear what the voters in St. Helena have to say about this, or anything as process. I thank you for your time, everyone, and I know it's a long day. Thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you. Thank you. Priya, do you have a?
Yes, we do. I will just give you one moment. Okay, and I will allow this person to speak. Okay, you should be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you identify yourself?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is Glenn Smith on New York Lane. I hope you thought it would be part of your deliberations. I read the proposed Public Property Protection Act Initiative Statement, City Attorney's Analysis. I have some thoughts, and then three recommendations for your consideration. The initiative, if placed on the ballot, would probably result in substantial expenditures by various interest groups to support or defeat it. Since the initiative does not meet the legislative standards, this would be a waste and probably create a great deal of anger and division, regardless of how the vote turned out. While it might not have legal standing, the initiative, if passed, would make it difficult for the council to proceed with plans now or in the future to best, for best uses of a land's value to the city. This would limit funding for desirable projects such as affordable or workforce cultural or recreational development, or other desirable community enhancements. There have been innumerable expressions of public comment involving Adams Street development, including the 2009 Citizens Plan, Town Hall meetings, Shape Committee options, surveys, focus groups, and most recently, the Financing Civic Infrastructure Committee. These have generally supported the preservation of a portion of Adams Street bordering on Library Lane or Community Bank. However, the petition has 400 confirmed signatures. While this represents only about 15% of the number of citizens who voted in the 2018 Maryland election, it is a significant number and deserves to be recognized. I propose the following for your consideration. Adopt the recommendation of the city attorney and the city administration to decline the initiative on the November ballot as a binding on the city council. Second is to vote immediately to include commercial development on Library Lane portion of Adams Street. This would take potential hotel development of the entire Adams Street property off the table and make it clear that any private development would be on the back portion only. And third, place an initiative text on the ballot as a non-binding measure for a sense of the citizens on hotel motel development, but limited to the back portion of Adams Street. The legislative analysts were putting actual ballots pros and cons and supporting arguments from each interest group. This offers the council the best opportunity to get the broadest input of public view, and it can help inform council direction and decision-making. As an alternative, given that it would be quite a stretch to do something by Tuesday, I, I, I suggest that the council could consider developing the same information as a survey mailed to every St. Helena registered voter, presenting the same advisory text and supporting information. Either of these latter approaches would probably be less satisfying to those who want the initiative on the ballot as a binding provision, but it would give everyone the opportunity to, yeah. So I hope.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Yeah, if you could just wrap up, that'd be great. Thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you very much. Is there additional public comment?
Yes, there is additional public comment. One moment here. Okay, let me allow this person to, to speak. You should be unmuted.
Hello, hi, this is Richard Cyperheld speaking.
Hello. Hi, this is Richard Cypher-Heldt speaking. I, I want to, uh, address my, uh, or add to my, uh, public comment that I sent, uh, to the council. Uh, there are some things. First of all, I, I think I want to make it clear that I'm not a signatory to the initiative. I'm not necessarily opposed to hotel development. I am troubled by what's happened here because the way it's been handled. In the conversations that I've had with council members, I was, I've been informed that the council and the city have been aware that this was a flawed initiative for the reasons that the City Council has pointed out as far back as last January, and that, uh, the proponent, um, was advised that in order to make this, uh, a legally permissible, valid initiative, it needed to be revised. Or I, I assume, um, that step was not taken. So the city is now faced with having to make a decision about a flawed initiative from a technical or legal point of view. But they've known about this since January, and I think the city has to take some responsibility for not letting the citizens know that we're signing this petition, that it was problematic from the get-go. Um, I don't know how to resolve, how the city's going to resolve this, but I certainly am in favor of, uh, the City Council coming together with a solution, whether it be advisory, uh, initiative on the ballot, or whatever, but to allow the citizens to express themselves. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Priya, is there additional comment?
Um, hold on one second.
Just, just one point of clarification, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, certainly.
As we're going, as we're going through some of these comments, there are legal issues, in my mind, that are being raised. Uh, I, you know, a couple of them have been raised about the process of, the process from January. I would expect, I hope that our attorney can maybe provide some background to respond to some of these, these questions so that there'll be more, uh, a deeper, uh, you know, communication on some of the issues that are raised. Some of it's true, some of it's, uh, maybe not, and so I just want to make that, uh, I would like to see, hear that from you at some point. Thank you.
We do have additional public comment. Um, I will unmute this person. Um, just give me one second. Okay, and you should be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, this is Cio Perez, and it's been interesting to hear some of the comments up to this point. Um, but I, I question the council considering handling this situation, uh, that's obviously, uh, got a lot of, uh, different things connected to it, as well as, uh, the interests of the community, uh, and not postponing this until we can actually have attendees at the meetings themselves. Uh, I think the county is doing a disservice to the community as well by dealing with certain, uh, projects that they're considering, uh, without having the opportunity for the public to actually show up at the meeting and give their opinions at the podium. Having said that, uh, I think, uh, the council, it's important, in any development being considered, uh, as large as the Adams Street projects, uh, being considered, uh, need to consider the inadequacies of, uh, the resources that should be required, such as water, sewer, and other infrastructure items that are totally lacking in the town as it stands now. And yet, these things are not being, uh, mitigated or considered seemingly, uh, uh, in order to get mitigated, uh, for such a project of such a size being considered. Uh, this, this is not doing the city any good. Um, uh, there's a lot of, uh, uh, things that are inherently difficult with, uh, with, uh, hotels. Uh, and, and again, uh, housing is an extremely important issue for the town, which, uh, considering the lack of affordable and low-income housing that the city has at this point, is drastically short without any consideration of new developments. You've got to question the traffic load that'll be created again by having, uh, employees coming way outside the area of St. Helena and not from within the community, just due to the lack of housing. And again, the lack of water is another important consideration in, uh, hotel development. Uh, again, TOT tax can be pretty tempting, but really, the social cost of, uh, of hotels and tourist trade, uh, can be extremely high, uh, on a town as small as we have here in St. Helena. So as this process goes on, whether it be a consideration for a hotel development or other development, uh, private development, uh, here in town, I hope all of you, as far as council people, uh, take into account the, uh, lack of infrastructure and resources that the town has at this moment in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Priya, is there additional public comment?
Yes, we do have additional public comment. One second. Okay. All right, I'm going to allow this person to speak. You should be unmuted.
Hi there. My name is, um, Maggie Olivier. So hello, Mayor Ellsworth, and council members of the City of St. Helena. I wanted to do, uh, I just, first of all, thank you for coordinating this Zoom meeting, um, and giving us an opportunity to, to share how we feel. Um, recently, I visited the website, just what, two days ago, and I looked at our vision statement for City of St. Helena, and I'm going to read it quickly. It states as follows. "The City of St. Helena will strive to be economically sustainable and continue to be family-friendly, diverse, and safe community, which prudently manages its financial and human resources, continues to upkeep and improve its infrastructure, ensures its water security, provides a full range of housing, business, cultural, and recreational opportunities, and embraces and retains its historic small-town character, beautiful natural environment, and high quality of life." And when I read that, I'm just trying to really, I'm grasping at how a hotel on Adams is mission-aligned, and I'm not going to read our mission statement because I know you all know it, uh, and it's clearly stated on our website, the city website. Um, but a hotel on Adams just, to me, does not scream mission alignment or vision alignment. I'm having such a difficult time, as a local, a lifelong local, understanding how, like, what am I missing here? And I'm not anti-development in any way, shape, or form, so I'd like to definitely go on file saying that, but I'm in support of smart development. And I just want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to share how we feel, and I'd very much like to echo Richard Cypher-Heldt's statement and sentiment. Um, this is, um, this is, I ask of you to continue to move forward, but circle back to our vision and vision for St. Helena. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we, do we have additional comments, Priya?
Um, Mayor Ellsworth, are members allowed to speak again if they've raised their hand once?
Uh, no, we're, we just take each person once, and if they have additional comments, they can submit by email.
Okay, thank you. Um, we, hold on one second. I'm just looking to see if we have any, I did see a hand that was raised, and then it went away, so I'll give another opportunity, um, for folks to continue, uh, to raise their hand again. These are people who haven't spoken. Um, we did receive one letter that would like to be read into the record, Mayor Ellsworth, so I am going to, um, read that letter, and, um, I'm going to start my clock, and I'll try to get through, um, to, uh, reading the entire thing. So I'll do that, and I'll continue with what we can.
Are we going to read every single letter? Uh, yeah, we still have to clarify that policy. Uh, I'll allow this, uh, this letter, and then I think we do have to define that policy and make that clear to the public, but I will allow this, this reading tonight. Thank you, though, uh, my press mayor. Priya, please.
Thank, perfect. Thank you. Um, this letter is from Nancy Durbin. "Dear City Council and City Staff, On July 24th, 2018, after paying over $175,000 in consulting fees, Cosmont Companies presented a report wherein the question is asked, 'Does the city want to pursue the status quo approach in St. Helena, if becoming characterized as a second home community, or pursue an approach that allows a residential live-work-play environment for all generations? I urge City Council to make decisions that support the residential live-work-play environment for all generations. That's why I support the Financing Civic Infrastructure Task Force report that offers a plan that will provide the finances our town needs for the future without selling the Adams Street property.' The task force determined completion of any two of the five potential hotel projects identified would pay for a new city hall and police station, plus make a substantial annual contribution to the city's general fund. The two options that best support the live-work-play vision for St. Helena are the Farmstead and Wine Train Krug Winery Development. Together, they provide sufficient revenues for the city, and they will do so with the least amount of negative impact of all the hotel site options. Farmstead is already developed and only adding lodging to their existing enterprise, which relents the need for additional staff, and their plans are environmentally friendly while promoting downtown St. Helena for their guests. The Wine Train Krug Development will provide their own water and connect to downtown via foot bicycle on the wine trail, as well as offer guests free shuttle to downtown, free shuttle service to downtown. And with these two projects being in the north end and the south end of town, we eliminate drawing more traffic deeper into St. Helena, which is one of the many negative impacts a luxury hotel complex on Adams Street would have. Contrary to task force projections of four or five years before any hotel could be built, Farmstead is on track to open in 2022 and expects to contribute $2 million or more in TOT annually. Beyond hotel development, the task force estimates the city has $12.6 million in sellable assets, not including Adams Street, should there be some urgent need for money. In the vision statement found on the St. Helena City website, we agree that there is a determination to provide a full range of cultural and recreational opportunities and embrace and retain its historic small-town character, beautiful natural environment, and high quality of life. Of five identified sites for hotels, only one of them requires the selling of property that currently embodies cultural and recreational opportunities, embraces our historic and small-town character, beautiful, beautiful environment, and high quality of life. There's absolutely no need to sacrifice the 5.6 acres of public property on Adams Street when viable, an excellent alternative that are actually better suited for hotel development exists. I ask the City of St. Helena to do all it can to honor the Civic Task Force recommendation of two hotels, neither of which need to be on Adams Street, and help our local Farmstead and Wine Train Krug Winery interests bring their outstanding community-based developments to fruition. Thank you, Nancy Durbin."
Thank you. Uh, additional public comment, have you seen?
Um, I am not seeing any new additional public comment at this point.
Okay.
Oh, hold on. I am seeing one hand up that is new now.
Okay.
Um, let me unmute this person. It's the person whose, uh, letter I just wrote, read, I believe. So, uh, let me just allow this.
And now, I think that, that she had her time with the letter. That's, Priya?
Yes.
I, I think she had her time with the letter. That was the four minutes that's allotted to each person. So we can't, we can't do two, yeah, unfortunately, sorry. Um...
Okay. I'm not seeing any additional public comment.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um, so with that, uh, no further public comment. I will close the public comment. I'll bring it back to, oh, Mr. Presswich? Mr. Presswich, am I here?
There was one additional person that raised their hand for just a moment. Appears to be Bobby.
Do you see her there, Priya?
I do. I saw the hand, and then I thought, go away. Um, Bobby, do you want to raise your hand again? Uh, yes. Okay, hold on one second. Let me unmute Bobby. Um, okay, this is interesting. I'm seeing that, um, I'm unable to unmute this person due to some technical difficulties that we have. Let me see if I can come up with a workaround for this. I can allow this person to speak. Um, they will come into, uh, a different part of the Zoom meeting, and then I can see if I can put them back into the side of the public. Are you okay with that, Mayor Ellsworth?
Certainly.
Okay, one moment. Okay, so you should be able to, um, speak.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Um, I'll be quick. Um, first of all, I wanted to say that regarding the loss of trust that some people apparently have had, um, that was communicated, um, by their, you know, talking about fraud and that sort of thing, my sense is that, um, in, that they, these people need to be, um, with unabashed, um, uh, an unabashed embrace and encouraged, um, to, whatever has to be done to improve the trust from the City Council, um, can be done with compassion and understanding. So I just wanted to say that I, I think that expressing a lack of trust should be welcome, um, if that's where people, if that's what people are feeling, and that it's okay to do that. Um, the other things I wanted to say, though, um, this, this new idea of the advisory, um, measure, I didn't, I didn't understand the, the city attorney, I don't think, totally answered, uh, City Council member, um, Koberstein's question about who would do the writing for the arguments in favor and against, and would that need to be expedited in order to get it done by Monday or Tuesday or whenever it was. So I, I, I sort of wanted more clarification on that. And then also, if, um, neither of those things worked, I was just wondering if the City Council had, um, didn't want to put the, um, the initiative on the ballot, but wanted to have something to do, something, could they have legally asked for a moratorium against all action to develop that property until the initiative could have been written as it should have been written, and in a timely way, brought before the electorate at the next, um, at the next, you know, balloting time? So I, I, I was just curious if, if that would have been possible. The advisory, um, um, the advisory option seems to be simpler, but I'm not sure how the, yeah, anyway, okay, that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. So now we'll check with Priya to see if anybody else has put a hand up?
Uh, okay, I'm looking to see if there are any people who have, who are new, who haven't spoken already, if there are, um, any new raised hands, and I'm not seeing any new raised hands.
Okay. So with that, I'm gonna, uh, close, uh, the vice mayor.
I'm just waiting for a point of order. So my gut feeling is telling me that Nancy Durbin may not have known that the fact that her letter was written and read out loud precluded her from giving an oral statement. I don't think that, uh, that's the way we want to operate, especially given the fact that this is the, uh, person who has drafted this initiative and is the main proponent. I would just offer that to council to think about, unless, I don't know about maybe how they are instructed offline. I just want to make sure that we're fair to our, our speakers.
I would support reopening it. For that, I think you make a good point, Mr. Doring. Um, there was one other person that wanted a second, um, opportunity, and so if we open it up, uh, does the council, are we comfortable with that?
Well, I can see the difference between someone speaking already, knowing, okay, I spoke, I got my sense, but I don't know if Ms. Durbin knew that by reading her comment that she was then precluded to make her own comment. I don't know, so I lean on the side of, of open and transparent communication, allowing folks to stay their peace.
Okay, so I, with that, uh, can we see if Ms. Durbin is still available to speak?
Yes, I will unmute her. Hold on one second.
Hi, thank you so much, Mr. Doring. You're exactly right. Um, I wanted that other letter was for... I wanted that other letter was for item four rather than 5.1, not knowing there's no four tonight. Anyway, what I'd like to know is why didn't the recommendation to potentially reject this initiative come up at the last council meeting? Since you were well aware of potential deficiencies, or why wasn't it rejected when the petition was delivered instead of waiting all this time? So instead, we spent time talking about it at the last meeting, giving the appearance it was still alive, kept on track to proceed, insisted on making a decision to allow for the impartial analysis, and then dealt with environmental concerns that were ordered for the analysis, only to now want to reject it. So potential deficiencies are a moot point because I think the attorney knows full well the initiative can legally go forward and be invalidated after the vote for those same deficiencies. It could be helpful to acknowledge that to the people who have concerns. As a proponent of the initiative, for the record, I can tell you we would have no problem with that, nor would the over 500 people who signed it. So putting it for a vote and seeing what happens, and then potentially invalidating it, would achieve, better achieve the other alternative options that have been suggested. If Adam Street was the only place a hotel could be built, I would differ differently, but there are all these other options that you heard about in the letter. You guys have paid two consulting firms over $456,000 in the last three years alone to analyze and make recommendations about downtown, and recently offered $300,000 more dollars for businesses that might be struggling right now, which I support, but this initiative on the November ballot would be a drop in the bucket compared to those other... This is a very important issue. I'm asking you to put it forward, fully understanding that even if it passes, it can be invalidated at the end of the process. That would achieve, better achieve, the option of an advisory... An advisory measure that probably wouldn't even make it in time for November, but even if it did, why go through all of that when you have this at hand that will give you the result we're looking for, which is an opportunity for the entire community to vote, which is way more effective than asking people to mail things in? That just does not do the job. So, thank you for letting me speak, I really appreciate it. I appreciate all the effort going into this. As far as what do we mean by hotels and motels, those are details that can be worked out later. If you end up voting this down tonight, I ask that at the very least, there is a commitment that there will not be any RFPs for hotel or motel development put forward for Adam Street until one way or another, this is put before voters for a vote. That's at the very least, that you should make that commitment tonight. But you do have the legal ability to actually pass the initiative forward, and then if it needs to be invalidated at the other end, we can happily live with that. Thank you very much, you guys. I know this is difficult, and there it is. And thank you again, Mr. Doring, for giving me a chance to speak up, I really appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Thank you for the comment. Priya mentioned there's another hand up.
Yes, this is another hand that's up. I believe it's someone who is using a shared Zoom account, so it's a new person. Mayor Ellsworth, would you like me to unmute that person?
Yes, certainly.
Okay, one moment. I'm gonna allow this person to speak, please state your name.
Can you hear me, Priya?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, this is Anne Carr. I'm sharing Glenn Smith's computer and watching this very carefully. My feeling is that this meeting is really not about what happens to Adam Street. It's about whether this initiative goes on the ballot in November. I feel that the initiative is important in that it takes a census of, hopefully, as many voters in town who show up to vote. However, because of the legalities of it, I don't agree with the argument that, well, if it's not legal, we can always do something different after it's put on. What I really, really hope that you all will do is to vote against this, but immediately put together an advisory measure that would be available in time to be on the ballot, which would ask the same questions, and also honor the folks that put their energy and their opinions out to the City Council. It just seems like we're in a morass of legal difficulties here, which might be pretty easy to get out of with an advisory measure. I'm not sure what that would look like, but I'm sure our good city attorney would be able to advise you all how to word it. And thank you for letting me speak on Glenn's computer. I couldn't get mine to work, so here we are.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, Priya, are we seeing any additional?
I am not seeing any additional raised hands.
Okay, so with that, then I will bring it back now to the council. I've closed public comment. And is there any initial council comment or thought at this point? Anna?
Yeah, my thought is that the measure is significantly flawed. So putting on the ballot as is, so the city would incur some liability, but if we reject it as drafted, we have the ability to put it on the same as the advisory measure. And then we give the people who worked so hard on this initiative a voice at the ballot box. So it's really important that they have the opportunity to be heard at the ballot, and the advisory is the best way to do that, since it gets rid of the legal challenges. And I don't know how we go about that process quickly, which I think does need to happen, so that it could get on there, but I do have some draft language that's really simple that I could suggest, if you would like to hear it.
Kara, what are your thoughts on a process for language? And I guess what I would want to make sure is that whatever the language is is consistent with what the folks who signed the petition.
I did that. I used that as a draft, but not using that. I just wanted to make sure that it honored the spirit of it.
Kara, what is your comment on that process of something that's drafted?
Sure, so my general comment is that, in terms of the process and the timing, is that there is sufficient time to get this on the November ballot, but we would need to get the language drafted and into a resolution very quickly, because it would be added to your agenda on Tuesday. The more specific that the council can be with the language that it would like to see, the better, because then you can have us draft a resolution with that proposed ballot measure language in it, and then that would come back to you next week, and you wouldn't then be wordsmithing at the council meeting.
Is there an opportunity for the proponent to review the language to kind of verify consistency with the intent of the signers?
The process can work really however you want it to. If the council does come up with the draft language tonight, and it's in a form basically that the council is happy with, then that is going to be a public document, and the initiative proponent, as well as any other member of the public, could comment on it.
And so there'd be a comment period before Tuesday?
Sure, well, as soon as the item gets posted, then the regular public comment procedures would occur.
Okay. Additional council comment, Mary?
Since Kara is unmuted, this might be a time to address the question of what happened in January, and what you were or were not able to do, recognizing that you're not the attorney for the proponent.
Sure, I'd be happy to address that. So I will say at the outset that the process for getting initiative measures through the entire process is daunting for most people to do because the Elections Code has very specific requirements in it as to the form and the process, as well as what the form of the petition is supposed to look like. And as at least one of the public commentators noted, the courts do highly value the right of the voters to adopt initiatives. And all of that, I think, was sort of in the backdrop, as well as the fact that I, of course, represent the city and the City Council, and I don't represent any one particular initiative proponent. I have worked on other initiatives and other similar measures that have gone to the ballot in the past, and have never provided any type of analysis on them along the way. We did, however, take a look at this initiative measure when it came in. It came into the city clerk on January 6. After the city clerk receives the initial measure, it is to be transmitted to the city attorney for preparation of a title and summary. That title and summary must be provided within 15 days. So I reviewed the initiative, and based on a relatively quick look, because we didn't have a lot of time to do research, I did think at that point that the initiative potentially could be flawed for not enacting an organs or other type of legislation. And like I said before, it's highly unusual, I think, to reach out to the proponent at this early stage, but I did draft a letter. And that letter was dated January 15 of this year, and I informed the proponent that it was my opinion that the proposed measure would not be a proper exercise of the initiative power. And I cited a couple of cases that I mentioned. I informed her I cannot provide her with any legal advice, but I recommend that she could revise it, withdraw it, and resubmit it in the form of an initiative measure without any prejudice or any harm to the proponent. I also recommended that an attorney be consulted regarding the form and substance of the measure, and again, said that a revised measure could be basically withdrawn and resubmitted to the city clerk. However, given the obligation to prepare a title and summary within 15 days, I asked for a response by January 21 in order to give me sufficient time to prepare that title and summary if a decision was made to not withdraw the measure. At that point, the letter went out, and I subsequently received a response from the initiative proponent on January 17, informing me that she disagreed with my opinion and believed that the measure is... That she was satisfied with the form of the initiative, and therefore, assuming that the petition achieved the necessary signatures, basically, they would be moving forward. So my option at that point was to seek a court order to not have to prepare the title and summary. There is one case that is out there where a city attorney has done so and has gotten relief from the court to not prepare the title and summary. However, as has been noted by some of the public commentators, there is also case law basically highly valuing the right of the voters to the initiative process. So thereafter, I decided not to do that. I prepared the title and summary that has been circulated with the initiative measure, and the proponent moved forward and began gathering signatures. This issue has been fraught with other legal concerns, as I noted in the staff report, including technical defects that we noted and concerns that the county registrar of voters noted as well with respect to the way that people filled out and signed the petitions and failed to include the name of the city. However, we have determined that essentially all of those technical defects were in substantial compliance with the law and decided to continue to move forward, which is where we are at this evening. That's a long answer to your question.
Thank you.
There was some...
David? Oh, Mary, I'm sorry, Mary, go ahead.
I don't even know if you can respond to this, but there was some suggestion that the city should have informed people at that time of your concern when the petition was being circulated. Was that something we could have done or should have done at that point?
There's really not a mechanism set forth in the law to do that. Like I said earlier, you know, I wasn't entirely comfortable even writing the letter to the proponent because it's not something that I think city attorneys typically do. But we did have some concerns at the outset. The city and city staff and city council members, you know, as you know, really can't campaign per se, and I would have been concerned at the time had the question come up that any effort to inform people about proposed problems with the initiative would have been viewed as trying to thwart the process and to interfere with the signature gathering process.
David, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, hey. So it's sort of, it's... It's a little sad to me that we could have... You could have declined, Ms. Wade, and I understand your logic, you could have declined to add a title and summary way back when, which would have upwarded the process back in January. Instead, we got to here, we've only got a week to go, and now the recommendation is to decline to place the measure on the ballot. That wasn't the recommendation last month. That's now the recommendation. I'm very concerned about the sort of anti-democratic aspects of this... How many hundreds of people signed this thing? And given that the courts are very favorable towards the right of voters to initiative, despite the technical problems, and there are technical problems, I think we've got to encourage citizen and resident feedback. We're really only here through the consent of the governed. And to sort of either massage the language somehow that fits our needs... You know, democracy's sloppy. I have the same position I had three weeks ago or four weeks ago. I would put it on the ballot and see what happens. I mean, these people went through a lot of effort. It's very democratic of us to allow their voices to be heard. If we massage this, that's not their voices, that's our voices. I understand the process, it's not perfect. I wish there were better lawyers involved. I wish we were all, you know, I mean, sometimes I over-lawyer stuff, sometimes I under-lawyer stuff. It's a... This is a challenging thing. I just think we should respect the process that's occurred so far and not intervene at the last minute. Thanks.
Mr. Doring, Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts at this point?
Well, I think, I'm wondering what council member Knutson did in January to bring that issue to the attention of our staff and attorney. I think, I don't disagree with some of your comments in terms of the difficulty here, but I don't think, I mean, you're making a call against our city attorney, which I don't think is fair, because I didn't ever hear from you during that time say, hey, you know, challenge the ballot summary, which is an entirely different issue. That's not the issue we're really even facing, it's more of a technical issue. We were all informed through correspondence that there were issues at that time, and I don't know if I heard from any other council members saying, hey, let's give this kind of direction to our city attorney to not prepare the title and summary, out of fairness.
You're absolutely right. I did not make that comment to the city attorney, because I don't think it's really... You gotta leave the politics out of it, right? You gotta let the people do whatever they're gonna do. So I'm not, I hope, Mr. Doring, I hope, Mr. Vice Mayor, that you haven't anticipated that my comments are casting any aspersion on any person in this activity. I understand it, but this isn't January, this is July. And, you know, so I, you know, I understand Ms. Wade, I understand the petitioner. I understand people have signed and didn't write down the fact that they live in St. Helena. This is, you know, it's not perfect by any stretch of the imagination. Helena. Uh, this is, you know, it's not perfect by any stretch of the imagination, but I, but in my comments, I'm not trying to cast aspersions on the process.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions, um, just in terms of timeline and expense. So if, if a couple of options we're looking at are, um, if we were to vote to put the initiative on the ballot and then after it was adopted, it, it could be nullified, that process, uh, what does that look like in terms of, um, I would say expense and, uh, the mechanism by which, say, it, it goes to the ballot, it gets approved, uh, that's just if it does, uh, and then it would be n- nullified because of the, the flaws, uh, what, what would that process be? How would that come into play?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. This is something that I, I did want to address. Um, the servant is correct that the ballot measure could go to the voters, and if it is approved by the voters and passes, that it could later be invalidated. However, the council would not have the ability to invalidate it. The council would have to take the initiative measure, and we would have to figure out how to deal with it, interpret it, um, potentially, you know, amend the applicable general plan provisions and zoning code provisions that I, as I've mentioned, were not entirely clear how that would go, um, or how to best effectuate the voters' intent if it were to pass. If the council were interested in seeking to invalidate the measure, we would have to file an action in court. Um, I don't know how long that would take. It wouldn't necessarily, I don't think, be given the highest priority because of the fact that, um, the measure has already passed. Um, and so it would basically be treated, I think, similar to any other civil case that was moving through the court system, and we would just have to wait and see how that process, um, turns out in the end. I don't know exactly how much that would cost, but, um, there would obviously be litigation costs and expenses associated with that.
Okay. And then enough, I have one more question, uh, here, and then I'll, I'll check with Kiana. Uh, is there a, a way, if, if we were to say we, uh, an advisory measure was, was something we agreed upon, um, and the stipulation that no action on the property could happen until after that vote happened, is that something we could memorialize or, or have as part of, of this discussion, an end result of this discussion?
Um, the, the council could a- agree, I suppose, informally not to move forward with anything on that property between now and the election. Um, yes, that, that, the council could do that, basically make the commitment to do that.
Okay. Anna, did you have a?
Well, I was just gonna offer to read my draft language that I had, if there's interest in hearing it.
I would, I would like to hear it.
Oh, thank you. Let me read-
Put the effort into it. Let's hear it.
Okay. Shall the city of St. Helena allow a hotel motel development on the 5.6 acres of public land at the corner of Library Lane and Adam Street? Parentheses, Napa County Assessor's parcel number 009-150-006 adjacent to the library and commonly referred to as the Adam Street property. Question. This is an advisory vote, a yes vote if you want to protect the Adam Street property from hotel motel development, or a no vote if you do not want to protect the property from hotel motel development. Period.
Mary?
You know, I think that, um, the city did, and our city attorney did, what she could do to avoid us being in this situation, and, um, here's where we are. And I, I really think that the advisory, um, method is preferable at this point to moving ahead with something that we have been advised not to put on the ballot by our attorney, you know, for, uh, all the reasons she suggested. I'm not diminishing the voice of 500 or so people who signed this, but I feel that we represent the entire community and, um, to, we have to take into consideration what's in the best interest of the community. And I'm not interested in getting into a lot of litigation, uh, either way. This is, um, a relatively easy way to pose the question, which is perhaps what Ms. Durbin intended in the first place. Um, and so I, I would not be in favor of putting it on the ballot for two reasons. More litigation, and frankly, we've been advised not to. And I, I take that advice, um, seriously, and I think we should honor it. So I, I can go with an advisory thing. I think it's important to hear what people have to say. I think they have, will have some information about, uh, the property. I also kind of liked the idea of the survey too, but that was more or less a fallback that, um, someone suggested. It might give us the opportunity to provide more information. But, um, you know, I just want to say I intend to follow the advice of our city attorney here. Um, I think she did everything that she could to prevent us from being in this situation, and we're here now, and I think we should honor her, uh, recommendation to us.
Um, where I'm at is that, yeah, oh, Mr. Knutson, David?
Yeah, hey, well, just one comment, Ms. Cobberstein. Thank you for, very much for your comments. And by the way, uh, Ms. Chateau, I was gonna say thank you for that well-crafted statement. So, um, that was, thank you. Um, Ms. Cobberstein, the thing about an initiative is that you don't actually have to capture 50% plus one. You have to capture a certain amount, which is a significant amount, and it's hard work getting people to sign a petition. Let me say, they mostly have professional petition signers, gatherers. When those guys were petitioning against the rent control in Vineyard Valley, they paid a lot of money to send those guys around town. So, um, it doesn't have to be 50 plus one. It simply has to be enough to get it on the ballot. And I, and I'd like to say that, you know, that it's about, it's about democracy in my mind. Anyway, thanks.
Okay. I would just say, what kind of precedent does it set for the future? Uh, you know, if we have been advised that, um, there are some legal deficiencies here that are gonna lead to problems if it's adopted, why not take the easier route of actually doing the advisory, uh, either poll or advisory ballot, um, measure? Um, it should be the best solution under the circumstances.
Yeah, we'll probably, we'll probably just disagree, agree to disagree on this, but in my belief is that you let the people do it. And if there's problems, you deal with it, but you sort of defer to the people. Um, and, um, you know, it's, not everyone can afford a fancy lawyer. Not every person writes as well as, uh, you know, I'm not a lawyer. I can write a law, legal statement, but it may not be perfect. Uh, and by the way, standards change over time. Something that was perfect for a ballot initiative 20 years ago would not be perfect enough today. So the language changes, and it's, we don't want to make the burden too high that people can't participate. I think that's, that's my point. Happy to agree to disagree.
I, I don't know that we're disagreeing, David. I just think that there was an opportunity to perfect it and make it better, knowing that there were issues with it, and it's unfortunate that that didn't happen. Um, I think we have to listen to the legal advice we're being given as well, and that, that Anna's proposal is, um, a reasonable way to move forward.
My thought is that certainly, is that hun, you know, hundreds and hundreds of people, uh, voted to put something on the ballot. I think we need to put something on the ballot. I, I, um, to me, the question being on the ballot, I think there, uh, there is a way, if we look at this advisory measure, um, to, to put that question, uh, that, that many people wanted on the ballot to the community. Is there, um, an agreement? Would there, could there be an agreement among the council on, in terms of action on the, the land? Would have to, anything would have to wait until after that, that vote? Is that something that can be attached to an advisory measure that the council would agree to?
I, I had, Mayor Ellsworth, I had interpreted, yeah, I had interpreted your question to apply to the time period between tonight and the November 3rd election.
Yes, that's what I, I had, did I say that wrong? I'm sorry. That's what I had intended to say.
Um, and so the difficulty is that, um, putting something in the measure, um, I guess-
Oh, it wouldn't have, uh, I don't think it would have to be in the measure, but it would have to be-
Oh, okay.
Somehow side card or something that, that said that the, any action on that property would, would have to wait until after this, this vote, any potential action. Um, is, is there, um, would there, could there be agreement, uh, with the council that that would be a sort of stipulation of, of an advisory measure?
Um, there could be an agreement by the council for that to occur. Um, I, I suppose, I'd have to give it a little more thought as to what it might look like, but another option, I suppose, could be some type of a land use moratorium that is temporarily placed on the property, um, um, for that duration.
How would that be presented or, or put forth?
So that would be presented in the form of an ordinance that the council adopts. But I'd need to give it some thought as to how that, what that would look like, um, and the, the shape that it would take.
Mr. Mayor, I also would love to get the feedback from the folks that put together all the ballot or the, all the, the petitions, um, you know, hundreds of people signed. It'd be interesting to hear their thoughts about Ms. Chateau's language. And it doesn't have to be tonight. It could be on Tuesday.
Yeah, I certainly, I certainly think that that needs to be, uh, uh, in a sense, run through that, uh, that lens to make sure that it's consistent with what they felt they signed. Um, I think that's very important. So is there, is there, um, is tonight a night that we can discuss, uh, holding off on any land use activity, uh, until we, we hear from the people on this issue?
Fine, with me.
Any other council members to weigh in on that?
If we make a political commitment right now, I don't really need, uh, an ordinance. Obviously, I'm telling the, the people that I'd be willing to wait. I think, uh, Ms. Monet raises an important issue about lack of trust. By the way, I was not intending to, um, say that people cannot express their lack of trust. That is a completely different issue. Um, but I, I'm willing to say right now that I'm willing to wait till the election, you know? It's, it's such a, a measure worth to go forward. If you were gonna make a motion to that effect and it got seconded, um, I don't think we're gonna be able to get much done between, you know, with July 8th and November 3rd anyway. So practically speaking, I would be surprised that any action could take place. But that's me.
Any other thought on that?
Just, um-
Anna?
I'm the same with Paul, in that I don't think it needs an ordinance. Just practically, it doesn't make sense to do anything until, if we're asking voters to vote on it, we wait and we hear what the voters have to say.
David? Okay. Mary?
I think that is more or less the practical effect of this ballot measure, whether it would have gone the way it was initially proposed or whether it goes as an advisory. I don't think anybody's gonna get into any kind of serious, uh, discussions. And so I agree, I don't think we need an ordinance. I think what we need to do is determine if we are putting the, uh, have some kind of vote on whether we're putting it on the ballot as is, so we know what we've done, and then we can, uh, take action on Anna's suggestion.
So, so, uh, tonight, are we, uh, just giving direction on this? Uh, let me, let me bring up my, uh-
I think it's, we should vote so it's clear what we've done going forward. This is a difficult issue.
Actually, Ms. Cobberstein, I actually think that we should defer, since we're gonna, since we've got proposed language from Ms. Chateau, we could have a chance for the public, which are interested in this, to breathe out, read the proposed language, and then we come and address this. We have a bunch of options. We reject it, we can reject, we can reject the original language, we can adopt Anna's proposed language, we can adopt the, what, you know, what, it seems to me it's premature without actually being able to discuss.
I understand why we had to take some action tonight and give the direction to this staff so that we could do all this on Tuesday night. So what I'm suggesting is that we, um, take the action to deal with the options that are in front of us, and then the staff will know where we're going. I think if we wait till Tuesday, it's-
Yeah, I, I disagree, but that's, we, we can agree to disagree on this. I, I think, you know, basically, we've got a proposed piece from, uh, Ms. Chateau, and, uh, we rolled the, just, you know, that's just, uh, uh, option number four or whatever for us to discuss on Tuesday.
Kara, where, where are you, uh, in terms of process here? Uh, what do you think is the best process here for us?
Well, I, I have a couple of responses to that. Um, as a very technical matter, the council is supposed to take action on the initiative measure tonight, um, pursuant to the Elections Code. Um, from another practical matter, if the council's interested in putting an advisory measure on the ballot, I do need direction from the city council to do that, to prepare the resolution. I would need to get the language from Councilmember Chateau because I couldn't write as fast as she was talking. Um, and then I would prepare all that and then have it be a part of the packet for next week. Um, we can do that quickly. Um, likely, probably wouldn't get out and posted tomorrow, but it could be done by Friday.
So, so let me ask this, if I may. So if we, we make the vote, uh, that's the vote where we decline, uh, to place the measure on the ballot, we give the direction for an advisory measure to be prepared, language from, uh, that Ms. Chateau has put forth can be vetted through you or run through you to, to organize how it's presented, and then can there be a memorial, memorializing of an agreement of no action on the land, nothing, doesn't have to be an ordinance, but just some memorial, uh, memorialization of an agreement, um, so that it would, we basically have three components of this? Uh, the, the, the action tonight, the direction for Tuesday, and then, uh, a memorialization if, if folks agree to that?
Uh, sure. I mean, I, I've never, I don't think, done anything similar to that, but I suppose, um, a document could be drafted, um, a resolution of sorts, if that's what you're looking for, if not a moratorium ordinance. Um, or I suppose, um, the council could agree to, um, a statement of some sort.
But, yeah, perhaps that could be something that we, you, we, we revisit on Tuesday with a couple of options. Uh, I, I, I agree, it doesn't, it probably need to be heavy-handed, but just some sort of, uh, marker. Um, does, so with that, is there any other thoughts from the council, uh, where we would want to go at this point? Do we want to do a motion? Where, where are we?
I feel like I'm talking into the wind, so let, let me try and be clear, and then I won't speak on this again. Without us having the option to do, uh, any of these three options on Tuesday, we're coming up with a third, a fourth option that we're, we're saying all these three options are done. We can't take it not, we can't put it on the ballot. We can't, you know, we're just gonna say, no, we're gonna put all of our faith in this new piece. What if the petitioners say that new piece, they don't like it and disagree with it? You know, where are we then? We're stuck. So that's the reason why I think that we should defer all action until Tuesday. Mary?
Yeah. I think the issue, David, is that because of the time clock and the Elections Code, tonight is the night that we must make this, uh, initial decision. We cannot put it off until Tuesday. And as far, you know, I've listened to what Anna said. I thought it was relatively close to probably what the intent was. So I'm not envisioning a lot of back and forth over what comes to the city council on, on Tuesday. We'll have public comment again on it, uh, of course. But I don't think we have the option to not vote tonight on the three options that are in front of us. I think it's, we're required to do it.
Ms., Ms. Wade, is that true? We're required to- We're required to do a vote today, even though on Tuesday we can submit a ballot measure for the fall?
So there are two separate issues, and the elections code does provide that the council is to take action to either, to take, to take an action tonight. The issue of putting an advisory measure on the ballot is really a separate action, separate and apart from the initiative measure that's before you.
And we're able to do that next Tuesday? That's not too late?
So, and next Tuesday is the last day, according to the county registrar of voters, for the city council to call an election.
But so it's different from the initiative from the petition? The dates are different? Is that, just to be clear, sorry, I want to be really clear.
No, the dates are the same. So also, on next Tuesday's agenda will be a resolution calling the general municipal election for the mayor and the council members. So it's the, it's, it has to do with the county's schedule. And when they have asked the city council to adopt resolutions, calling the election so that the resolutions can get onto the Napa County Board of Supervisors' calendar for action by the Board of Supervisors.
And so therefore, the petition is not allowed to be considered on Tuesday? Only our new advisory is allowed to be considered next Tuesday? Is that correct?
Correct. Unless the council votes to put it on the ballot. And then if the council votes to put the measure, the initiative measure on the ballot, then we would similarly be preparing a resolution to put that on the ballot for next Tuesday's meeting.
That's why this is so complicated for regular residents and citizens to...
I know.
... through incredibly complicated election law. By the way, for example, not to bore you guys, but I tried to vote for Lester Hardy for some county office years ago, but he wasn't officially, so of course, my ballot was just thrown away. So it's sort of funny how unless you know the rules, you don't actually, aren't able to use them. All right. Thank you.
So, so my, I guess, you know, wanting to make sure that the language, that's where I want to make sure it, it, we have it written, you know, it's coming from our attorney, and the input may come from the council, but it's crafted by the attorney and then has the opportunity for the public to, and, and, and the proponent to make sure that it aligns with the intent, just so that there's that, that extra coverage. And, and then making sure, so on Tuesday, we will be presented then with one decision. Is that my understanding regarding this rule?
If that's the direction the council takes, yes. And, and just to clarify one thing, the work that I would be doing would be, as I picture it, sort of putting the frame around the picture. The picture being the advisory measure question that Councilmember Chateau has, has drafted. And so I would just basically be putting it into the format and the resolution for the council to adopt for that to go on the ballot. So the language, assuming that the council accepts the language that Councilmember Chateau read, I wouldn't be necessarily changing that.
Okay, okay. And then one thought too, is would the proponent have the opportunity to send a draft of what the language might look like from, from their perspective, just so you can compare the two to align? Does that make... Okay.
The proponent could send, could certainly send in suggestive language.
Okay, I just want to make sure to...
It's like any citizen could comment, correct? A public hearing, it'll be a public hearing. So, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So with that, are we there yet in terms of having a motion and moving forward here?
I can make a motion, the first motion. That, so I move that we decline to place the measure on the ballot for the first motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Time will have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Chateau?
Yes.
Cobberstein?
Yes.
Knutson?
No.
Vice Mayor Doring?
No.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. And now, we want to give direction to move forward on an advisory measure and with a, an agreement of no action, well, this is probably a, so the, next we need direction to prepare an advisory measure.
Is that another motion, or are we just giving direction?
Right, I'll make a motion that we proceed, put together an advisory measure along the lines that was, or described by Anna, that she work with the city attorney to bring something back to the council for next Tuesday evening.
Please repeat.
Pardon me? Did you not hear it?
You went out on board.
Okay. My motion was to the effect that we proceed to have an advisory measure drafted utilizing the language that Anna proposed, have her work with the city attorney, and bring it back to the council for consideration on Tuesday evening.
I second.
Anna, roll call, please.
Just to be clear, the first motion to decline to put the measure on the ballot did pass with Anna making, Councilmember Chateau making the motion, Councilmember Cobberstein seconding the motion, and Mayor Ellsworth also voting yes. And for the second motion, could you please, I'm sorry, I was trying to write some notes. Could you repeat that?
Okay, I, I'm sorry, we're having so many technical problems here. The second motion is to direct Anna to proceed to work with the city attorney to bring back advisory language to the council for consideration next Tuesday evening for an advisory measure on the ballot.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, I'll, Councilmember Cobberstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Chateau?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. And then the third piece would be some sort of memorialization of a, of a no action on the land until the November 3rd election. Certainly at least until that, through that period. How would that be presented?
It's not going to happen, Jeff. Nobody's going to do it. There'd be an uproar.
Agreed, agreed.
It's not going to happen.
I think the discussion was, we felt we didn't need a formal policy or something. We can talk about it again on Tuesday evening. I don't know.
Well, I just thought, I thought some memorialization of the, of an, of an agreement that, that this, this question we're bringing forward on November 3rd, any, any action would, would wait until that question is asked. That's, that's what I thought we had come to.
Mr. Mayor, you have the commitment of, verbally of the majority of the council, so that is...
Okay, all right, we'll go with that. Very good. Okay, so does the staff have what they feel they need?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Presswich, do we have everything we need for this evening? Okay, and the council, any other thoughts before we sign off?
No, just that I appreciate the city attorney's work on this. It's a very hard issue, so thank you for all that you did.
And thank you for the community, to the community for weighing in on this issue and being patient with your elected officers.
Yes, that too, thank you.
To plapple through this.
Thank you.
Be loving, be kind.
Will adjourn the meeting, and, yeah, please, everybody, just continue. We've got to stick with our COVID-19 protocol, and we will see you on Tuesday. Thank you.
Bye.